I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to begin our meeting this evening, we will be going on a tour of the transition program within this facility, thus why we're here this evening. So, for the camera, for the camera purpose, we'll be going on hold for a little bit. We will come back and continue with our agenda in just a short while. So everyone's welcome to come with us on the tour. We'll go now. Thank you. Okay, so we've just wrapped up our tour of the transition spaces here. I do want to give a sincere thank you to Mr. Ross and everyone, to our students, to our assistants, all for coming in and leading a great tour. I have every confidence that that program is in very capable hands and going to run well. I think the kids are going to love it, if they're not already loving it. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the tour?
Go ahead, Kim.
I have a question. Stoves were supposed to be in the kitchen, regular stoves. Did those get moved out?
Those are coming.
Okay. Because I was, there was two of them that Mr. Aruda had cooked Thanksgiving dinner.
Right. Those were actually, I believe, Mr. Aruda's.
Yeah, they're at the high school.
Oh, those were your stoves?
They're at the high school.
Okay.
They went with him.
Okay.
So, the stoves that were here went to the high school?
Correct.
Why?
Those were not Fort Bonn's stoves, those are Mr. Aruda's stoves.
They were.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then just...
Yeah. Well, I think we're actually only getting one. We only need one. Yeah.
Okay, I'll just remind everyone to put your microphones on if you're speaking. Anyone else?
The curriculum...
I don't make them stuff.
Just, I just had a couple of questions. The curriculum, I'm all about trying to make it as lifelike as possible. The curriculum, like, they'll be learning budgeting...
Absolutely.
How to read a recipe, how to read a sign when they're out, that says stop, all that.
Exactly. Yep. All of those things.
Just concerned, money skills, time.
Yep. So if you look at that unique curriculum, and Mr. Ross uses that as a standard curriculum, and then uses his own teaching skills to personalize it for each of the students, but it goes over those areas of life skills. So then when they're out, it's not just when they're in the classroom learning about that, then they take it out to the community or to their vocational placements and transfer what they've learned in the classroom to those areas.
Okay. That's pretty much all I have.
Ms. Farner?
Yes. So just quickly, Sarah, I know we were talking about it, so I just wanted to kind of follow up on that. The nine students right now are Tiverton students, but I know we've all talked about expanding that beyond Tiverton. Any thoughts on, just I guess, PR for that?
Yeah, so we have thought about this. I was actually chatting with Superintendent Haskins about that. So now that we have most of it up and running, and it looks like the way we want it to, we will be reaching out to the Connaught Times and Newport Daily News to come and do a piece, and then we can see if it expands from there. But I do know that districts are looking for transition programs, especially smaller districts in Rhode Island. It's challenging to create one when you don't have nine students. So that's something that, you know, we definitely want to advertise and try and bring students in.
And how large can it get?
It depends, really, on the level of need. So, you know, it ju, I think it just depends on the level of need...
Okay.
...on how big we can make that class.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, good. And I'm glad you guys, that's encouraging. I'm glad you have plans to sort of talk about the good things that are happening here.
Absolutely.
And this is absolutely one of them. So I'll be looking for those articles, and, you know, maybe we can even get someone from the, you know, the state, you know, news system to, you know, come in. But that's great.
Yeah, even the Department of Ed, they come around and they do site visits.
Yeah.
This is something that we can talk to them about coming.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. I just want to thank Mr. Ross and the students and the aides for being here. And just piggybacking on what she's saying, after it's marketed, is an open house possible?
Yeah, I think anything's possible. When you create a new program like this, anything like that is possible. So sure. When Mr. Ross is out in the community too, he is, he is partnering up with some other local districts who have not as many students, so that's already happening too. So just being out in the community and going to different events, I think, is helpful.
Great. Thank you.
Is he still, is Mr. Ross still here, or did he, he go? Boy, he, I'd love to have him as a, as a teacher. High energy, just excited about what he does, and happy, and such a good rapport. So, kudos to you. I think he left, but kudos to you.
Yes. He and the job coaches are very energetic, and the students do love being here. As you can see, they wanted to stay tonight, so...
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, once again, thank you all for joining us on the tour. I'm sure you all enjoyed it as much as we did. Now, we're going to move on to open forum. We do have a number of people signed up this evening. I'll ask you, when it's your turn, to please go to the table. Make sure your microphone's on. I'll remind everyone that you'll be limited to three minutes of general comment, on or about. And just to, you know, remember that we're all here for the same goals. So, opening it up, Shannon McNamara.
Hello, everyone. It's been a minute since I've seen you all. I do have a little bit of a list, but I did want to start by saying that my children's classroom teachers have been great. They're really enjoying the school year so far, and a lot of, some of the issues I'm bringing up really revolve just kind of around logistics. And I did want to say, I have reached out to Ms. Pont. We've spoken, she's aware of my list and has gotten back to me with some ideas too. So, one of the things is, and this is at Ranger, there's been a lot of lunchroom overcrowding. So because we're hosting, or housing all of the Fort Barton kids, it really is double, and the lunch periods have been combined. So, it seems, according to my daughter, and she's usually the best to get information out of, she can have nine to 10 kids at her table, and that's really cramped. And she, a lot of times, chooses choice three, which is the salad option, and that gets called last. And because there are so many kids who are getting school lunch, I asked her to check the clocks, and she only had, yesterday, six minutes from getting her lunch, sitting down, and then she's been having to throw it away, throw away her milk. She can't eat. So I really think that that needs to be addressed. Not just because I want her fed, but also I pay for school lunch, so it really feels like, you know, I'm throwing away money for her to be hungry. The second thing was the parking lot safety. There's been a lot of afternoon pickups. I can only speak to afternoon because that's when I am there. And I had a real near miss with her due to visibility because she went to step off of the, off of the curb, and there were cars parked on both sides, and it was clear where she was stepping off. I had my son, but somebody came around the corner and did not see her, and I had to scream at her to stop. So that was not, not great. I do know that some of the buses in the afternoon are running late. I'm hearing from other parents who live in my neighborhood, and it can be about 30 minutes late, so that, you know, that hurts when they're trying to pay for after-school care, and they're only there for 15 minutes, but they had to pay for the full time. And it is one of the reasons I do pickup in the afternoon, is because we have after-school activities, so that's a big thing. And then, one of my biggest concerns is we're, we don't have a social worker right now, and that's part of my child's IEP. He should be meeting with a social worker two times a week. So, that puts him, as far as I'm concerned, out of compliance with his IEP. So I just would love to know, you know, where we are in the hiring process. I hope we're far along, just so that way those services are being met. And I just wanted to kind of end on, I tried to do an informal poll to find out why parents might not be using the bus, you know, which can contribute to more people being in those parking lots. A lot of it had to do with timing and after-school activities, and then the locations of those after-school activities. A lot of us seem to be going into mass for our activities, and I think some of their schools, their elementary schools, get out earlier than we do.
That is three minutes.
Okay. So that is all for me.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay. Jessica Cudo.
Hi, Jessica Cudo, 157 William Barton Drive. I'd like to start off by acknowledging and recognizing Mr. Zatoli and Mr. Kellet, and also the TMS staff for their presence during the drop-off and pickup, ensuring safety and efficiency of traffic, and the throughput of students entering and exiting the school and the school campus. So, I think that was my number-one fear of the first few days, having a fourth grader go and just kind of being mixed in with the older kids, but they have ensured that there's a contact person that safely gets the children... a contact person that safely gets the children to the entrance. So, it just puts me at ease to be able to drive away knowing that, you know, everything's good in that way, in that manner. But despite all their attention to safety, there is that campus, that bubble, that they can only have control over. But my number-one concern, I feel, is the increased traffic flow, the lack of safety and precautions outside of the school campus. So, specifically entering onto Quintil Drive and exiting onto Bogomarsh. So, the issues are as follows, and just, my apologies, the east and west, I'm just going to point in the direction. So, one of the issues is the size of the car line extending onto Bogomarsh Road. So, you have lines that when they can't enter Quintil Drive, they have to kind of wrap around where Bogomarsh is, and they're pulled over to the side of the roads. They're either having to take a right or left onto Quintil Drive. The first few, two days of school, there was a police detailing both during drop-off and pickup. While it was still, it was new to me because I've never been in that area, dropping a child off or picking them up, but it felt there was a bit of organization, and I felt that the traffic flow was safer. But since then, there's been no police, you know, detailing during those hours since the first two days of school. Another issue that I had encountered was upon pickup of my son. You have a bus or buses driving on the opposite side of Quintil Drive to get onto the school campus. What I mean is, you have the line that's on Quintil Drive wanting to get onto the school campus, they're pulled over to the side. You have the buses that need to go to the school to pick up the children. So, it is difficult because you have the cars pulled over to the right of the road, you have cars exiting the school campus, which leaves a very narrow path for a school bus to go down. So, two occasions, I've had to pull over to the right as far as I could, I think, onto someone's curb or drive over there, there's that house there. I could just foresee that being a dissatisfier for that individual that lives at that site or any of those houses there. So, that's a concern, buses having to drive on the opposite side of the road to get to the school campus. And it just gets tricky. And then cars speeding on Bogomarsh. Unbeknownst to me, do you realize that the speed limit is 40 miles an hour? I did not know that until I drove by, I looked, and it's 40 miles per hour. Despite that flash and light, if you look prior to entering Quintil Drive, there is a sign that said "speed limit 40." So, I will be the first to confess that I sometimes do the 40 or go over 40, and, you know, how many of us do? Now, school is in session, increased traffic, more walkers, you have children trying to cross. I've seen kids crossing the road who may not take the bus that live local, and there's no curbs. I'm almost done. Also, what defines a school zone? There's nothing there, there's signage saying a school zone, by the way. So, I did look online, and it's a physical location, which includes school grounds and a designated distance from these grounds. In Rhode Island, the school zone extends up to one-quarter of a mile from the school. So, on Google Maps, I looked, and Route 177 East Bogomarsh, when you take that turn, it's .2 miles. That's a quarter mile. There's no signage. There's nothing saying 20 miles an hour, so that is something of a concern. So, the things I'm hoping that you, as a school committee, can consider to ensure safety and facilitate change in a positive way could be to consider paying for a police detail during peak hours. Example, 7:30 to 8:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Another thing can be to collaborate with town council and/or public safety to discuss the possible changes to a school zone designation. Street signage, traffic lights, decrease the speed limit, so that's just something, if you could, just kind of put in the back of your mind. I would hate, hate, for Tiverton to make the news because there was a terrible accident of some sort there, and just keep that in the back of your mind. If I didn't bring it up, you would maybe not have known, so I just wanted to do my due diligence and let you know, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A lot of great points, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jordan Riley.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
So, my name is Jordan Riley, 13 Fieldsstone Lane, Tiverton. I've lived in Tiverton nearly my whole life. I'm also a parent in this district, and I need to ask some questions that many families are asking. What exactly has been saved by closing this school, and at what cost? Fort Barton, once a fully functioning elementary school and nationally-recognized blue-ribbon school, has been reduced to housing fewer than 10 students, while important, in this transition academy. While that program is very valuable, there are far more effective spaces it could be housed in this town, spaces that wouldn't interfere with the growing student population. Instead, we have an entire school building renovated and bonded as an elementary school, barely being used. While buses are overcrowded, classrooms are stretched to capacity, pickups and drop-offs have become a safety hazard. In fact, less than a week into school, I watched a fire truck in Ranger's parking lot back into a parent's car. Wouldn't have happened in previous years. And not to mention the fact that a nationally-recognized blue-ribbon school, one of Tiverton's greatest assets, has now been dismantled. Yet, unbelievably, Fort Barton's Blue Ribbon Award is still splashed across Tiverton School's homepage as if it represents the strength of this district today. That image feels like a slap in the face to every parent, child, and teacher who knows this building no longer serves its intended purpose. And to those who think this is about saving money or easing taxes, it's not. Taxpayers are still paying the bond on a school that is no longer being used as a school. For what? This doesn't feel like poor planning, it feels like sabotage, as if somebody lit a match on their way out, and certain members of a committee stood by to fan the flames. Call it what you will, poor planning, bad judgment, sabotage, whatever the label, the impact is the same. This isn't just about numbers, this is about children. My eight-year-old says Ranger's beautiful. It is. But he misses his school. My nine-year-old nephew, now in fourth grade at the middle school, had to walk into a fistfight between two seventh graders on the way into the building last week. And while I want to know that the middle school principals are doing their very best, and I've witnessed that, they're doing everything they can. They shouldn't have to. These middle schoolers are now being confined and restricted to areas in the school that they hadn't been confined to in the past, just to manage safety and overcrowding. And while as parents we're appreciative of that, this isn't what should have to be done.
That's three minutes.
I'm just about done, thank you. So, I'll have a few questions to note plainly. What, if anything, has been saved by causing this disruption? What new costs have been created as a result of this move? How much more are we spending on transportation, which is taking our children now an hour and 10 minutes for my son to get home in South Tiverton? He hasn't been taking the bus, I've actually been having to take time out of work to go get him, because I can't put my child, my eight-year-old, on a bus that long, it's not safe, in my mind. Why is a building designed and bonded as an elementary school now being used for fewer than 10 students, while hundreds of others are crammed into overcrowded classrooms? And now, with precisely 1,001 new homes slated for development in Tiverton, Sunset Ridge, Pecasa Reserve, Souza Road, Stafford Road, Friendship Farm, Fish Road Village?
Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Nope, I'm just about done.
You're well over your three minutes, ma'am.
What is your plan? No, I'm just about done, I have one more paragraph, thank you. What is your plan for all of these new students? Our children are resilient, our teachers and staff are exceptional, they will always make the best of every situation, and for that, we're grateful. But what does, but this does not excuse the reckless leadership and short-sighted decisions. Family, staff, and students deserve better. As a parent and taxpayer, and as a lifelong resident of Tiverton, I am asking this committee for a true resolution. It feels like we're pointing to numbers that don't add up. Please show us what has truly been saved, acknowledge the costs that have been created, and most importantly, show families what your plan is moving forward, because this isn't working. Tiverton deserves better, and our children deserve better.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Amanda Baker.
Hello, I'm Amanda Baker, kindergarten teacher at Ranger School and a taxpayer in town, 9 Fernway in Tiverton. I'm speaking today not only for myself, but for my fellow kindergarten teachers. Last year, a decision was made to cut a part-time aide for each of the kindergarten classrooms. We are significantly seeing that impact already eight days into school. It's, there's a lot going on in a kindergarten classroom when we don't know the needs of the children that are coming to us. As great of an outreach as we do, we still, there's children who register at the end of August, and we don't have information on them coming into the classroom. We can only provide them so much support by ourselves. Seventeen children in the classroom by myself at the end of the day, and I have seven walkers and children who need to go on eight different buses now at Ranger at the end of the day, and children who go to be on the bell, and am I be on the bell today, or am I a walker today? Oh, and I have to go to the bathroom, and this one just had an accident, by myself, with no one to call to come support me, because everyone else has their job that they need to do. And I know I'm getting significant stories from the other classrooms as well. This is something that we need to rectify for our children. They don't know any better, because this is their first school experience, but we can certainly do better for them. Thank you.
Jennifer Getz.
I signed up as part of our team, so I reiterate what Amanda...
Okay. And Elaine Deldeho. Are you all part of the same?
We are.
We are.
Yeah.
I'm going to speak, if I'm asked to speak, I'm speaking.
Elaine Deldeho, 73, Abelhart Lane, been working in Tiverton for 26 years. I was a former teacher here at Fort Barton. The program looks lovely, they're actually using my classroom, which is not a shock, but it looks lovely, it looks beautiful. Taking the tour tonight, I was really inspired, thinking, wow, this would be such a great program to actually integrate into a school, especially an elementary school. I thought about all these things I could do, I'm like, wow, if this program was here, like, during my lunchtime, I could go play cards with the kids, or maybe I could have them come in and do some kind of community service project. The past few years, we were, I was having the children decorate veterans' like, thank you cards, and we'd wrap them around candy bars, and we'd give them to the veterans dinners and lunches and whatnot, and I thought, wow, that'd be a great thing for these students to come in, and they could kind of help me with the children. Like, I was thinking of all these ideas, if I were here, like, how amazing it would be to include all of them or spend time with them, and then even bring them in, so they're actually like, acting like an adult role model with my students. So, I know that you had said that you were thinking about, like, marketing this program, but if you could think in the back of your mind about maybe making it where it's not so separate for them, and they could actually be integrated with other children and adults who are just willing to spend time with them. So, I didn't expect to say that, but I just wanted to say that it looks lovely, and I wish them all well. And I want to talk about the kindergarten aide position as well, being cut. I've always had this motto that no one's coming. Like, I know no one's coming to help me, I know no one's going to help me with a student, I know, you know, in kindergarten, you have students coming in with needs, and it could be social-emotional, it could be crying that they're sad, it could be undiagnosed autism, ADHD, and usually they say, well, in kindergarten, it's the first experience they've had in school, so we're not just going to give you an extra special aide, or they're not going to get an IEP, and not that I'm looking for that, but usually having an aide in the morning and the afternoon, they're actually helping me collect data, they're actually making it work. So, today, I had a student fall, severely fall, get hurt really bad, and it's like you're trying to comfort them, everyone's coming in, and I don't have anyone to bring this child to the nurse. And it's like, no, honey, stop crying, you're going to go down the hall, take a left, it's on the right and around the corner. They can't do it on their own. I have students coming in in the morning for breakfast, they don't know where the cafeteria is, and if one more person tells me, oh, they're going to get it, they're going to get it, it's not fair for right now or in six months to say, no, it's on you to, you know, figure out how you're going to get to the cafeteria to have breakfast in the morning. So, it really has impacted our students, and I'm not going to, you know, cry and say, poor me, but I don't have a bathroom in my classroom, because I have a smaller room, I still have 19 students, so they have to walk to the bathroom. So, the aide who's in my room, which is my best friend, she has to take up so much time just bringing them to the bathroom, and there's, I don't know if you know this, but at Ranger, in the pod that I'm in, there's one toilet. So, if there's five classrooms...
That is three minutes.
Okay, there's 100 students, I just want to finish this thought, there's 100 students, let's say half of them are boys, there's one toilet. So, today, I had two boys sharing that toilet, and I had to go on to a whole lesson, like, no, 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 you can't be in the same stall together. So, it is, not having an aide has really impacted not just classroom, curriculum, social-emotional, you name it. I'm asking, and I don't usually ask for anything, but I'm asking for the sake of my students, especially when parents ask me that they're concerned about the ratio, and I've told them to contact you. I mean, I feel like every teacher keeps things at bay, like, we don't want them to come to you, but I have no problem unleashing them and saying, please, but I want you to know, everyone is really working hard, all principals, all faculty, we're trying to make this work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Denise Dure.
Good evening, Denise Dure, I'm the school nurse teacher at Pecasa Elementary, 30 Valley Drive in Bristol. I am speaking on behalf of myself and the wonderful Laura Rocha, who's the school nurse teacher at Ranger Elementary. We chose to come before the school committee jointly to speak to you regarding the decision that was made to reduce kindergarten aides to a half-day position. We absolutely understand the budget constraints, but as the district's elementary school nurses, we are here to offer perhaps a slightly different perspective than our wonderful kindergarten teachers. The medical acuity this year throughout both elementary schools is higher than it has been in the past years. Kindergarten, in particular, has a population in which there are students that require frequent medical treatments and interventions that sometimes require multiple visits to the nurse's office. We, as nurses, rely heavily on the classroom aides to help facilitate travel back and forth, to listen for medical alarms, to ensure students who have been medically treated actually eat their lunch, truly, the list goes on. This does not even account for social-emotional needs that are always prevalent in our kindergarten classes. To put it simply, they are our eyes and ears for our newest students who have difficulty verbalizing or advocating for themselves and their own needs. They allow a five- or six-year-old who may have had an accident in their pants, which in kindergarten is a pretty common occurrence, the ability to have a trusted adult help them clean up without making the whole classroom aware. This is especially important, as this year, we have two kindergarten classrooms that do not even have a bathroom within their class, and students need to change down in the nurse's office. Teachers cannot leave a class by themselves to help these students. These aides are the reason why a student may need a break, they are able to take that break, and their teacher is able to keep on teaching their peers. They are an integral part of why kindergarten works. We ask you to please consider reinstating our full-day kindergarten aides on your next agenda discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And is Laura Rocha going to come?
Everyone's going to say that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that takes us to the end of our open forum. I will just add very quickly, a number of good points were raised this evening. I know your administrators are here, listening. And I hope that... I know things are already running smoother this week than they were a week ago. And I have every confidence that they will continue to get better. But I'm glad a lot of these things have been brought up. So thank you.
Diane, should we have, like, an emergency meeting?
No. An emergency meeting would only be in the matter of a... A true emergency, and that's not what this would be.
Some of these are like, safety issues, though. That's not an emergency?
No, I wouldn't classify it as such. If you want to make a motion later on, or actually add it to our next agenda, or call for a separate meeting, you may. But it doesn't rise to the level of an emergency meeting. That has very specific constraints. Okay. All right, moving on, our consent agenda. This evening on the consent agenda, we have regular session minutes from August 26th and executive session minutes from August 26th. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
A little second.
All in favor? Thank you. Superintendent's update, Mr. Haskins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to report that the High School Interim Principal Search Committee has reviewed 17 applications and has identified five candidates to interview. Interviews took place yesterday and two interviews scheduled for tomorrow. I expect to have an announcement shortly thereafter for the interim principal of Tiverton High School. I want to thank all of our department heads who are serving on that search committee and Mr. Aruda, Vice Principal. Our administrative council, district and building leadership have met to review our Emergency Response Plan Addendum, identifying all of the staff in the schools who are currently certified in CPR and first aid, choking prevention certification. And we also clarified responsibilities for annual performance evaluations. At our last meeting, excuse me, I reported that we had some coding issues with our enrollment data. This cleanup is taking longer than expected. I have been working with our district leadership. It is an arduous, time-consuming process, but we are dedicated to fixing it. I do not have those data for you this evening. Most concerning right now are students who are coded for district outplacement, homeschool, career technical education, and private schools. So we're going currently student by student to make sure that those students are coded correctly in Aspen, so that we have an accurate report for you. The enrollment report as of August 22nd has 222 students at Ranger School, 181 students at Pecassett Elementary School, 405 students at Tiverton High School, and 589 students at Tiverton Middle School. Class sizes are ranging from... Let me just pull that down. As low as 17 to as high as 23 in the elementary level. Excuse me, as low as 14, lower in the kindergarten classrooms and higher in the upper elementary classrooms. So as I said, we'll have an accurate Aspen report for you related to district outplacement, homeschooled, CTE, and private schools at an upcoming meeting. For emergency planning, I met this afternoon with Police Chief Costa, Deputy Chief Miguel, Lieutenant Ledoux, School Resource Officer Smalldon, Fire Captain Murphy, and Police Captain Pelagi to review our emergency response plan. There are some updates that are being made to that plan. Nothing major, and nothing to announce this evening. However, as you know, the school committee approves the emergency response plan annually. We expect that plan to be reviewed with you in executive session in an upcoming meeting. That emergency response plan has been reviewed with all of our administrators and our emergency protocols. We're on target to have all of our faculty and staff trained in that by the end of the month. For facilities planning, Director Andrade, Director Mendez, and I are in the process of updating the district's five-years facilities plan for presentation at the September 23rd Building Committee. The building committee scheduled for today has been postponed until September 23rd, because we're awaiting quotes for the high school tennis courts and basketball courts. And we did get the basketball court quote today. For facilities, I'm pleased to inform you that the fire pump at Ranger Elementary School has been installed and is running properly as of yesterday. The policy committee will meet shortly to review some updates. An annual review of the following policies for all of our faculty and staff is currently underway. That includes harassment, Policy 1165, child abuse and neglect, Policy 1113, transgender and gender non-conforming students, Policy 1183, bullying prevention and intervention plan, Policy 1169, and the crisis intervention, Policy 1114. Our faculty and staff have until the end of the week to confirm that they have read and understand those policies. There is an update that needs to be made to the harassment policy, particularly that it identifies administrators by name. That will need to be revised and brought to the committee for approval. We have some open houses at each of our schools. The Rising Tigers program, Grade Four at Tiverton Middle School, is this Thursday, September 11th at 6:00 p.m. Pecassett Elementary on Tuesday, September 16th at 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. Ranger Elementary School, Thursday, September 18th, 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. Tiverton Middle School, Wednesday, September 24th, 6 to 7. And Tiverton High School, Thursday, September 25th, 6 to 7. Looking forward to addressing parents and members of the community during those open houses. I am having a wonderful time greeting students at the high school every morning at 7:00 a.m. while we are waiting for our interim principal. It makes for a long day, but it's a responsibility that I will transition to the interim principal once that individual starts. But it's been great to get to see our high school students entering each day. I have been pleased with the attendance. Very few students arriving tardy to the high school. So that's great news, especially since it's such an early start. Very appreciative to Mr. Aruda, who's been a strong and visible presence throughout the school day, and to the faculty and staff for maintaining smooth daily operations through the transition. It is not easy running a high school without a principal. However, the high school is so well-established, and the staff are so well-experienced, that it is running very well. And I was recently reminded by a member of our school committee of the important work that has been accomplished by our school custodians. So I'd like to just demonstrate an appreciation of effort to them. Our custodians accomplished incredible feat over the summer. Within 10 days, they relocated entire school to three different schools, including the fourth-grade program to the middle school. Everything from desks to books, rugs, boxes, all in the heat of the summer. This was an enormous task that set them back two weeks on their annual summer work, where they deep-clean every classroom, strip and wax floors, and prepare each space for students, which they did accomplish. Our schools were ready for opening day, thanks to their work. We owe much of our smooth start to their dedication, so thank you to all of our custodians. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more. We do have one important new hire for the district. I'm pleased to announce the new Principal-Secretary, Georgiana Murphy. Georgie, or Mrs. Murphy, comes to us to Tiverton from the Bristol Warren Regional School District, where she was an accounting manager. Previously, she worked for the Portsmouth School Department for 20 years, where she was an accounts administrator. I want to thank Mr. Aruda, Ms. Lori Luby, and Ms. Shelley Kamara for their support of the transition as Ms. Murphy has started this week.
Very good, thank you. Looking at your update, Mr. Haskins, and the fact that, you know, this is... With you are still being relatively new to us. And we're just getting used to this type of an update from you. And I do appreciate this very much. I do want to give the members of the committee an opportunity to ask questions, if they have any. I just will remind everyone that those questions do need to be limited to what's on the report. And understand that we will not have the ability to take any actions whatsoever, just to ask questions, if you have any. So I will look for volunteers, or if anyone does have any questions. Okay, I'll start and give people a chance to think of their questions. So your high school principal search, you'll require a contract ratification from us. Are you thinking that you'll be ready with that for the 23rd meeting? Will we need to meet sooner?
I'm unsure. Depending on the candidate and the candidate's availability, we obviously would prefer for the interim principal to start as soon as possible. So I'll need to see what the candidate's availability is, and I'll let the committee know. We may request the administrator to start prior to the ratification, but we can work out details. Our next school committee meeting isn't that far away.
Don't just two weeks.
So typically, a candidate will need two weeks to transition, unless that candidate isn't currently employed. You know, there are some candidates that are retired administrators. I don't think I'm giving anything confidential away by saying that. I think that for interim principals, you'll often attract retirees. In that case, someone might be available sooner. But I'll need to see what the availability is, and I'll update the school committee once we make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
On the enrollment data, do you anticipate having your work on that wrapped up by our next meeting?
Well, I do, but I want to also confer with my colleagues. I think we will... There are all three of them sitting here, so they're all nodding yes. So I think we'll have that ready for you by the next school committee meeting.
For the benefit of our new members, the emergency planning thing, first of all, thank you very much for being proactive and reaching out to Police Chief, Fire Chief, and the SRO to have them take a look at this before we do anything. For those of you who are new to the committee, we do evaluate the safety plan in detail. However, we do do it in executive session every year, because there are very sensitive parts of that detail. So it's just for your benefit, you're aware that that's the process.
Madam Chair, I just want to recognize, we have amazing partners in police and fire and the town. They have been proactive. We scheduled this meeting. They came prepared with recommendations for updates and have been very supportive of the schools in its emergency planning since I started. So I just want to give recognition to those departments and to our administrative staff. It was our school administrative staff. It was our first official task in August to review those plans. So I feel very confident in our emergency planning, especially having strong partners across the town.
Okay, thank you. The facilities planning topic, just as an aside, we will be having the building committee at 5:00 p.m. on the 23rd. Our regular school committee meeting will be at 7:00 that evening. We will be looking to prepare and take a final vote on what our capital request will be for the town council meeting that, last I knew, was scheduled for September 29th. Is that still the case, Brandon? Okay. I just want to thank you, Mr. Haskins, for being there early every morning. Appreciate that. And I'm sure the students are getting to know you as well, which is, you know, one of the added benefits of being there at the door every day.
Well, some of them are still like, who's the new guy? So it'll take a little bit of time. High schoolers can be a little, sometimes a little territorial with new people, which is to be expected. I really enjoyed it, but once that interim principal comes, I'll enjoy my 8 o'clock start.
Understood. All right, I'll throw it back out to the committee. Are there any questions? All right, here are none. We will move on. Thank you very much. All right, into general business, our first item this evening is the Tiverton Boosters request for approval to fundraise for a press box. Mr. Brigham. Thank you.
Feel like I'm ready to shoot foul shots. All right, so this is a drawing, just a copy of the blueprint, or a part of the blueprints that we've had. I think it was 2019, 18, somewhere in that window, when we initially put this up to do. And then we saw the fundraising, and then COVID hit, and then we just kind of fell to the wayside. So what... I'll go over the benefits of it. But what I'm just looking for is permission to stop fundraising. We're not looking for funding, you know, or anything like that. Just, I didn't want to stop fundraising, and then, you know, hey, what's going on? You know, just figured we'd kind of go through the protocol. I spoke with, originally when I put this thing, I spoke with Mrs. Craven and the A.D., so I have their approval. And obviously, she's not there, but... And so we're just, the next step would be you to gain. So if you look at the drawing, and I know it's very small. So the first floor is something that we can really benefit from, just for storage. It's going to be... Tentatively planned to be cinder block. And it'll provide us either 30 to 40 feet, whatever we end up deciding when we get up there and look at it. You know, storage for a lot of the outside. And if you go up to the track, you see the hurdles outside. Like, a lot of the track and field stuff, it gets piled up. And then softball, and, you know, we're all, we're just trying to, you know, we pile stuff on top of each other. You know, trying to get a home for stuff to get out of the weather. This could, you know, be a big benefit for that. And then the top floor, the original floor, is going to be, you know, the basic press box. You know, coaches will be there, officiate, you know, officiating, you know, an area. But then you'll also, the new scoreboard, you know, will be able to house the electronics for that. The sound system, you know, can get, you know, get a home that we can get it where it's out of the weather. You know, it's not sitting outside all the time. You know, that's kind of, I mean, the biggest, obviously, the biggest thing is aesthetically, it looks nice. And then the coaches, you know, most schools have them. You know, the coaches can use them for videos, for, you know, their players. And it's just not football. It's, you know, obviously, you know, all these coaches use, you know, the video footage that we have to send to colleges. And this just gives them, you know, a better, much better, you know, angle to look at the fields and see what's going on. Then, like I said, I think the biggest thing to me is the storage, you know, on that first floor. I know it's going to be a little more, you know, fundraising for it's going to be a little more difficult, because we've got to get more. We just, you can build them cheaper and just, you know, have staging or, you know, piping in different ways. But having it, you know, the storage on the first floor, and we'll probably run electricity, so you have lighting in there, because you'll have it on the top floor. So, you know, that obviously runs into more money, but I just think it's needed.
That it? So before I open it up to questions, may I have a motion to grant approval to Tiverton Boosters to commence fundraising for a new press box?
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so now time for discussion and questions.
Why don't you start down there this time?
I'll go.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this to us tonight. Was this drafted originally...
Was this drafted originally, like when you first wanted to pursue the project?
Yes.
Did you get a quote at that time, or is this?
We did. Who has it? I don't know.
Okay.
So I'm in the process, I'm actually meeting Thursday for the first, not the quote, but the first contractor that's going to give me a quote.
Okay.
And then we'll just roll from there.
And your organization is a separate entity, so?
Yes.
We don't need to go, like, through our bidding process, correct? Because they're?
Yeah, we're separate. We're donating, yeah, so we'll be donating a press box to you.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we're a separate entity.
And you answered one of my other questions. It's to store equipment for any of the teams, not just football, but could be track, could be baseball.
Mostly be track and football, I would think.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the big, and I think a small part of football, because they kind of have an area where, you know, we bought all those hurdles.
Yep.
Yeah, they're just sitting out there rusting away.
I know.
So, yeah, that definitely be, you know, that and some of the, I don't know, the padding, the cushions, I don't know where you're going to put all that stuff. But it's definitely going to be, it's needed, just so we can put stuff up there.
And what I think I read in the packet too were restrooms as part of this?
Well, it's something that we were not afraid, you know, depending how fundraising goes, you know, maybe add a concession and get rid of the storage that's there. And potentially, you know, prime it for a restroom and, or if, you know, someone comes to me with a lot of money, then we'll we'll put a, you know, we'll put a bathroom. But that, that'll be something I'll discuss with him that if we don't, you know, I got to see the money. I got to see what they're going to come at me. You know, when we did it in 19, we were looking like 40, 40s.
Yeah, I would imagine.
So I'm thinking, you know, it's going to be more. But I'm in good shape, I'm in very good shape for it, but, you know, it's just going to, when it's going to happen, I don't know. But I just want to, you know, I think we can get, we're, you know, I'm confident with what we have that it shouldn't take us, you know, a year, year, I'm saying a year, because I'm always trying to be ahead of it. But it may take a little longer, but it's definitely something we, you know, I feel we can do.
Well, I appreciate the work that you do and the families that have already contributed to it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pavo?
It's been a long time.
Ms.?
It's been a long time coming. I have one, it's a concern, I guess, about security of that area. When, you know, when nothing is going on, it's a dark area. We have floodlights, but will it be secure? It's a, up at the field, it's dark, even though we have the lights, it's dark.
So when we first were looking at this, you know, it looked at different facilities. If you look at, like, one in Middletown where it's just all the metal steel girder and and that's one of the reasons we kind of got away from, it's just going to be a structure. It's cement and then wood, and then you have a couple of doors and your handicap, like, all that, and it's all locked. Where they're not going to be climbing it, like, there's some that you see around that, yeah, they could be climbing it, and you're going to worry someone's going to, you know, mess around. But this, there's really not any of that, like, you know, it's a building. You know, so it's a little different look, that's why I said it's going to be more money. We can do something for $20,000 and have all the beams and everything, but, you know, one, we don't get the storage. And two, you're right, you're kind of opening yourself up to kids climbing on it and you know, you get, you know, Little League softball and someone, you know, falls on it, you know, they're climbing up there. So you eliminate that risk.
And you anticipate possibly about a year, the fundraising goes well?
Yes.
So that's good.
It depends what, and what I see, once I get, it's not getting quotes. Like, if it comes in really high, then that'll change. And that's something I'll communicate with you.
That's all I have. Thank you. I'll hold off.
Where is it going to go? Is it going to replace the snack?
Behind the bleachers. It'll be right behind the bleachers, above the bleachers, behind it, but like, the actual press box will be above the top seat.
Oh, okay.
So you'll have access, you'll have access, go up the bleachers, or you'll have the side access where they'll have stairs to go up.
Great project again, thank you.
Mrs. Polish?
First, thank you, Mike. I mean, I've been on the school committee a long time, and as long as I've been involved, you have been fundraising for this, for this town and for the boosters, so first, thank you. So where can people donate? Like?
Well, once, yeah, you'll, you'll see. Once I, we have a couple of plans, just for general donations. And I just didn't want to, you know, we have some, you know, we'll have on our Facebook and we'll have on our website, you know, ways that you can donation pages.
There'll be ways that many of us can help spread the word.
And there'll be different things that you could, you know, different amounts and and it'll be, it's going to, we have, already have
Going to do any kind of naming?
Well, because we already do, we have two big donors already, so it'll be named, it'll be named under them. But there's something I, you know, I'll talk to superintendent and the A.D. that, I don't know signage or names, if we can do something like that, that people can do, you know, in memory of or something to that degree. But like I said, we do have a few pretty good ideas that we're going to roll out, but I didn't want to, I just want to make sure we get.
Definitely, I mean, you know, we're all on social media, Facebook, whatever too, so just let us know so that we can help.
And we'll post it.
One of the things you are, are you guys a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Oh, so yay, so tax deductible people for your donations. So one of the things that I'm thinking about, even though you're a separate 501(c)(3), I think we need to be careful to coordinate with, like, the building inspector and fire, just to make sure that, and I'm sure you will, but just to make sure that if there's any safety concerns that we have to take into consideration and help fundraise for too, that we sort of cover those, so I don't know.
So in 2019, I had already started that.
Oh, good.
I had already, we went down, I got the print stamped.
Oh, perfect, okay, good.
But I think we got to go through it again, because I think there's only a certain, I have to check.
It's only good for so many years, you're thinking?
And there were certain codes that, you know, certain things that were involved. And we already had the, we had brought it to the police, I mean, the fire department, and they were worried, you know, concerned about the entrances, and so we've been through.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's been a while, but it'll all be, you know, I have all the documentation on it, so I'll revisit it all.
And I am, as Ms. Pavo said so eloquently, it's been a long time, so I think it's, it's great that this is being pursued again. I'd love to see more bleachers too.
Yes.
So we can set our dreams high.
That's what I almost think that you put the, I mean, the press box halfway.
Exactly, in hopes that.
In hopes that.
I agree.
Hopes that the school committee gets more bleachers.
I agree. Thanks, Mike.
To add to the feel-good part of all this, because I do support it, the proposer and Lima families are both very well-known in our community. But I also want to very much recognize you for your efforts, Mr. Brigham. Your last name counts just as much as anyone else's, honestly. You've done so much for this town, for our schools, and for sports in particular, that, you know, I really do want to thank you for that. This is a fairly large-scale project. It's not, it's a building, as we just alluded to, right? There's building code, there's all of that. What I would like to suggest is, once you, you know, you have your estimates in and, you know, you're ready to commence, that you work with our building committee. Because we have a number of people from the community who are very, that are involved in the building trades. And they could be very much good partners as the plans for this come together. And it would give me a little bit of a sense also that we're putting something on school, town property that has some kind of oversight from within the school or town.
I've already started that.
Yeah, the building committee, though, I think would be a really good point, where you could actually participate in those meetings and bring it to them and get their ideas as well. But obviously, cart before horse.
Yeah, and I've, I started those discussions already, just kind of beginning. But I also plan to, you know, kind of get, you know, some people at the school involved where, and kind of get a little bit of a team like they've done in the past, where we kind of get some different inputs. And they can kind of, you know, manage that end of it more, and I can kind of raise the money for it, you know. So I don't want to be donating, the boosters doesn't want to be donating something that, you know, like, I strong-armed everybody. I just want, you know.
Oh, no, it's a community effort, for sure.
Get everyone involved with it. So I've already, you know, approached them, you know, some beginning discussions.
Okay, very well. Let us know when you do kick off your fundraising, as everyone indicated.
And as I, as I spoke to the superintendent, as I get information and we start to take steps, because it is a big project, it's not like I'm just, you know, getting the fence, you know, we'll
Exactly.
Keep you informed of everything as we're going and quotes and, you know, if the design needs to be. Because like I said, you know, this is six years, whatever it's been. I don't know if it has to be, he may look at this and say, ah, that's different now, and so I might have to have it drawn again too. So, you know, it's really, you know, we're definitely at the beginning steps. But we started to roll really quick, and I was like, wait a minute, I got to get, you know, I got to get in front of everybody and ask permission first.
Yeah, no, and I think what, projects like this are the types of projects that bring people together.
Yeah.
So I wholeheartedly embrace it. So if no one has any additional questions, we will take a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous, sir?
All right.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, next up, we have the Tiverton High School band request for approval for a trip to Hershey, Pennsylvania. Mr. Bain? I apologize. I forget her name. Thank you, sir. Are these our invitations?
Thank you.
Hello. So I'm here to propose the music department at the high school's trip to Hershey, Pennsylvania in May, for your approval.
I'm going to start by making a motion to approve the request.
I'll second that.
Very good. Open for discussion. Do you have anything you want to tell us, first of all?
It's all outlined in the packet. We have our itinerary for the trip. We'll be competing in a festival in Pennsylvania. One thing I actually learned recently is that we'll be competing against, hopefully, some schools from Rhode Island and the area, which is really, really cool. Competition is always good in the musical, for music, for musicians, especially in high school. It's not something that you get to do every day. So, yeah, I'm really excited to be able to bring the band, chorus, orchestra, and hopefully jazz band to a place where they can compete with their peers. Yeah.
All right, anyone have questions? Johnson?
Thanks for coming tonight.
Sure.
So chaperones, how many chaperones does it take for a trip like this?
It depends on how many students sign up. Last year, we had way more chaperones than we needed signed up. So that wasn't a problem at all last year, yeah, it was a great thing.
Is there like a certain ratio that you have to have?
It's, I don't know, what was it?
Last year, we had 10 chaperones for 40 students.
Yeah.
Which is a lot.
I think, does our policy even speak to how many chaperones?
For high school, I think it's maybe one to 20, something like that.
I think I remember seeing a number around there.
Yeah.
So we were well, well below that last year. It's great to have enthusiastic people, that's important.
And what happens in a situation if a student wants to participate but is unable to make payments?
So, yeah, through Tempo, our boosters' organization, we offer a lot of fundraising opportunities to help defray the cost, because obviously, it is an expensive trip. And we want to be sure that all of our students are able to participate. So we are planning on running several fundraisers throughout the year. Our first one that we run is our pie sales on Thanksgiving. I just had a pie that was in my freezer last week.
Still good?
Yeah, it was fantastic. It was in the freezer.
Yeah, it's still good. Thank you for that. And my only recommendation, this isn't for you, I just would like for us to fine-tune our field trip policy before anyone travels, which I know this trip is not until May. So that's not for your worry, that's for my peers here, but thank you.
Would you anticipate, just anticipate, that most of your band members would want to attend? I know financially, sometimes even with fundraisers, it's hard for some kids. But just kind of out there, do you think most of them would be, have you introduced them to this? They know about this, right?
Sort of, they know the trip is coming, they don't all know where we're going.
I know that, Diane. I know that well.
There is a lot of interest in, as far as where we're going. I know Ms. Condi already told her students, I haven't told mine yet. One of them found out today. But there is a lot of excitement about where we're going.
And I've been very involved in band trips in the way past. Do they require now a certain number of band participants? There has to be a certain number to do the adjudication things?
I'm not sure as far as what Music in the Parks requires. In order to compete in certain, like, to compete, there are certain requirements. But with the division that we'll be competing in, it's schools of a similar size. So most other schools that we'll be competing against are of a similar, like, population number.
Some other trips do, like Disney does.
Yep, okay, yes, okay. So would it only be band or is chorus involved?
Band, chorus, strings, and hopefully jazz band as well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. To go back to the affordability factor.
Sure.
I can tell you that in years past, there may have been one or two scholarships that came at the last moment. So just kind of put that in your hat.
Absolutely.
But certainly encourage all the students to vigorously participate in the fundraising. And other than that, you're still using Bennett Student Travel, they're excellent, they know what they're doing. Wish you well. Kim?
I have to say, when I looked at the packet, I was thrilled to see this, because it seemed like the band was kind of petering out. And my son played in the band when he was in school. Yep. And they had such a great time, and it's just so, I'm so happy to see this. The pies, are they Chef Pierre again?
What is the company? I know it comes from, I believe, Newport Specialty Foods. I don't remember the name of the company, but
Because I know those Chef Pierre pies were pretty darn good.
It was very good, I ate it over the weekend.
And this, it says there's going to be a quad occupancy, so that'll be four students per room?
Yes.
Okay.
It's fewer rooms, and I believe that's standard for trips like this.
And how many are in the band now?
Right now, on my roster, I have about 13 students in the band, a couple more that are in a couple of other classes that are trying to participate via after-school rehearsals, things like that. We have, will be at the first football game this Friday, so hopefully I have a larger number then.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Deb?
I'm, as long as we're asking, how many chorus, how many, how many strings?
Orchestra has eight kids in it right now, and chorus has about 20.
Oh, good, okay, so we're getting to
Building, building.
Historically, all of orchestra has gone, and most of chorus has gone?
Last year, most of the band went as well.
Yeah, we're all band parents.
I like to hear that.
I want to give a shout out to Tempo too. You did mention Tempo, just like Mike. I know the Sports Boosters' Tempo has been super, super supportive of the music program. And I just want to give a shout out to them, that we appreciate them helping to make sure that fundraisers are going on, so the students that want to go can go.
Absolutely, I started last year, that was my first year here, and Tempo was such a big help in getting everything started.
And thank you both, because it is, you know, trips are a lot of work.
Okay, any other questions, discussion points? All right, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Is unanimous, thank you very much, and start your plan. Okay, next up, we have item C, approved homeschool requests for the 2025-26 school year. Ms. Crager?
Thank you. This evening, I have for you in your packet 19 families who have requested to educate their child or children in a homeschool study program. Their letters of intent have been, meet the requirements of the of intent have been, meet the requirements of the Rhode Island general laws. So I ask you today to approve those requests for homeschool.
Do I have a motion to approve the homeschool requests?
Motion to approve homeschool requests?
Second?
Second.
Any discretion?
Sarah, are these students from last year as well?
Yes. All of them are from this list, except for six. There are six new ones.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have, oh, the fun one, student handbook for the high school for the 25-26 school year. Ms. Aruda, you're a lucky man tonight.
I do consider myself very lucky. When it comes to the student handbook, there are no changes with the exceptions of page three, that it's basically school committee members, new school committee members. The administration also has changed, and the central office administration. Those are the only changes to the student handbook for this school year.
So there are no other changes that you're recommending? Okay. And obviously, well, first of all, before we go into Q and A, do I have a motion to approve the Tiverton High School handbook? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Now we are going into discussion. I'll kick it off. Obviously, we have, Ms. Craven referenced several times in here. And I'm assuming that that'll be changed pretty quickly online when we have a new interim principal.
Correct, yes.
Would recommend that you probably just remove her welcome letter. Unless, you know, you feel otherwise. But I know it's well done, but it's also from a former employee at this point.
May I suggest the Madam Chair that the motion be to consider approval for the handbook, subject to change of the interim principal being substituted for the principal who's currently listed in the handbook? That would be the only change to make.
What do we want to do for the welcome letter? Because I do like it. I want to just remove it. Who wants to take a shot at writing it? I mean, you can use it and put your name on it, I guess. Different picture. But I do, I do like having a welcome letter. I don't know if Mr. Haskins, if you'd like to maybe write something up for this year's handbook, just in the interim, but...
I would...
Or if you want the interim principal to, I mean, or Mr. Aruda, I just, I don't want to just take it out.
I think it would be a great opportunity for Mr. Aruda, the named interim principal, and myself to co-author. We could have all three administrators on it.
Fantastic, guys. I just don't want to remove it.
Okay, thank you.
Do I need to amend the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If you could, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the handbook pending...
The motion you made was seconded, so you're going to have to, and I should really bring that Robert's Rules with Dummies book with me. You will have to rescind your original motion and do an award.
Okay, I'll rescind my original motion.
Do I have a rescind, rescission of the second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, Mrs. Sherman?
I'll make a motion to approve the high school handbook pending the changes for administration in the, in the book.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Okay. Are there any questions or additional discussion?
Did this go out to students yet?
Yes, it did.
It did?
Yes.
I think next year, we should probably do it before it goes out to students.
We could, we could resend it once the letter is finalized.
Because I went through this whole thing, and there's, it's eighty-five pages. It's, there's a lot of things that are repeated. There's things in sections that don't belong in those sections. There's condescending language in here. I think it needs to just be fixed.
So do you, so you can vote no?
It's not, no.
You can vote no to approve it?
Yeah, it really isn't our job to rewrite it. But the point is well taken. Once, once we get past this year, a new principal is going to want to go through the entire document anyway. And that's fair. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor? opposed? Okay, four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have, oh, last on our agenda, discuss, Mr. Zatoli, discuss potential TMS handbook revision. Allowing cell phones on the buses.
Hi, everyone. Just to put this into context a little bit, this part about the cellphone was kind of an obscure section underneath the busing part. It's not anything, over the last couple of years, since we took a real hard, hard stance, cell phones being turned off at eight, not turned on again till ten, excuse me, two-thirty. We were not really pursuing it on the buses. There was one bus that was stingy about it, and we respected the right of that driver. However, aside from, you know, even listening tonight as we're working through the traffic, it's a very busy time in the afternoon. Kids are starting sports, staying after for homework club. We have children that come in on five, go home on one. And I think a bus breaking down or a slow start, some, just, I know that was a big topic earlier. Just so you know, we're getting the cars out in about twelve minutes, and the buses may be about fifteen. And, you know, my main concern is to get the kids home safe, whether it takes fifteen minutes to load the cars or twenty. But we are working on the Bogomash thing. That's a little trickier, for sure.
Can we focus on?
Yeah. Yes. So I, I think to ask our kids to not have a cellphone use all day, and they've been great about it, I do think it's a good check-in point for parents. Are you on the bus? Did you miss the bus? Where are you? I think that's the world we live in now. And when we've had a bus come in late or things like that, sometimes out with the kids, fifteen, twenty minutes could go by before I get a message out to parents, when in fact, if the children are outside, they can just text their parents.
So may I have a motion to approve Mr. Zatoli's request to revise the Tiverton Middle School handbook to allow for cellphone use on the buses?
I'll make the motion for discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll open it up for questions and discussion.
I, I have a question. I just need a little bit clarification. Would the cellphone use that the children would be allowed to do, to take their cell phones out, is that for their whole bus ride home? Is that for emergencies?
No, I would say for the, I would say for the whole bus ride home. Yeah, I would say for the whole bus ride home. And, you know, we've always treated the bus as an extension of school. When kids have misbehaved, we support the drivers. We follow our discipline code. And we would do the same thing if a child was abusing the phone. And Mr. Kellet and I will have that conversation with him before this goes into effect. Pitcher taking, things like that are a no-no. But we would treat it as though if it's a no-no on the bus, and it's like you did a no-no at school.
Did, have, did anyone check, or does anyone know of other districts that allow their students to use cell phones on the bus? I know it sounds strange.
I did not check. I've never heard that they're not able to use the phones on the bus.
I am aware of other districts that allow students to use cell phones on buses.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Jocelyn?
Yes. There's upcoming legislation for all schools by 2026, right, for cellphone policies in the building. What's the language in that, as it relates to the buses, as the bus is an extension of the school day?
You know, I honestly, I don't know. I know Massachusetts enacted that law. I don't know what they've said about buses, to be honest with you.
So I'd just be curious. I, I'm really apprehensive for several reasons to go along with this. But I would be concerned that we approve something, and then we find out we have to undo it again because of the legislation that's going into effect for every district in Rhode Island. Do we see all ages with cell phones? All, all grade levels? Do you see, like, fourth graders with cell phones?
No, I don't see our fourth and fifth with cell phones. I, I don't want to say unequivocally that they, that they don't. There are some parents that, you know, they want their kids to have a cellphone in case of an emergency. I don't see a lot with our younger kids, no. With our seventh and eighth graders, yes. It's almost, I would say, a hundred percent.
So what happens now if a kid is using a phone on the bus?
Well, we, to be honest, we were not even policing it until I saw it in there. And we haven't had any issues with it. Many of the drivers, I'm not even sure if they were aware that it was in the handbook. There was only one that was a little bit of a stickle. But the other drivers, over the last couple of years, have been letting the kids use the phones. And not good, no issues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You said it, just one bus that's not wanting cell phones?
There was one driver that was adhering to that policy. Yes. And we respected that.
Did they give a reason why they didn't want them to have their cell phone?
I think that driver felt that it was maybe in an emergency, they wouldn't be listening to directions and things like that. And, and we respected that. Kids didn't like it. But we, you know, we respected her wishes. But I think, in this day and age, I think parents like to have that immediate contact with their children when they can. And to our kids' credit, they have been fantastic about putting them away at school.
And have you contacted the bus company to?
Yes.
Find out why it's just that one driver and what the problem is?
No, I've spoken to her. We actually have a nice relationship. So I've asked her, and that's pretty much what she felt like. If there was an emergency and I had to give directions out, would they not be listening to things? Would it be more of a distraction?
She said that it would just, that's coming from the bus company?
That's what she felt, yes. Yep.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm a little confused on what exactly we're approving. So we're approving the, we're giving permission to revise the handbook that will then come back to us, that we can approve the language. Okay. Because right now, it says no.
It's a major change.
But right now, it says no.
Right now, it says no use.
Okay.
So I, I have concerns.
Me, too.
The, when the students are on the buses, who is legally responsible for those students? Is it the school district or the bus company?
Both. The school department and the contracted service, first student.
Okay. What is first student's stance on this?
First student wants to enforce policy.
Which is no, or they don't care?
Whatever the policy is.
Whatever policy.
Whatever the policy is, first student, whatever the policy is, first student wants to be able to enforce it. Currently, we have an unenforced policy. It puts students and the driver in the position of violating policy. Changing the policy to allow students to use cellphone on buses removes that contradiction.
But he said, I'm sorry, go ahead, Diane. I'll write my thoughts down.
What happens when it becomes common knowledge that it's allowed, and it becomes, I'm going to say, a free-for-all? And you have eighth graders taking pictures and videos of fourth graders without their permission? Or when you have...
We would treat that as such.
But if it's allowed, you have no leg to stand on. I, I, and my concern is that the state did pass a law that bans cell phones in classrooms. And I don't know if that extends to buses or not. Truly, I don't. And, and we will be, at some point, writing a district-level policy around that. We have to have that done by next August. With that said, I see this as opening a Pandora's Box, and shutting that box, if we change our mind, if it's not working out, and we have problems, is going to be next to impossible. I would, my own preference is that we not change the policy.
Could we, to Jocelyn's point, see what that, what, what does the state law say? Does it extend to buses? Like, let's do a little bit of homework there?
We could do that.
I'd, I'd like to know what it says and what we're, to your, you know, what we're going towards. And if they've spoke to it, then if they have, and we know it's going to extend to that, well, then our job is done. Because if, if they're going to say statewide, although, wow, if schools are...
I could tell you right now, the high school handbook says they're allowed to. So your high schoolers are allowed to.
But I am curious what the, what the direction the state's going in. Because they did pass a law saying no, none in the classroom. So to Jocelyn's point, is there any indication that that's going to expand to include buses?
I pulled up the law here. It's sixteen twenty-one forty-three. And it says that the, the policy shall include, but not be limited to, a prohibition on physical access to a personal electronic device by students during the school day, as defined by the Department of Education and the Commission of Elementary and Secondary Education, meaning bell-to-bell, start of the school day to end of the school day. This policy shall be in effect August of 2026.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I, you know, I recognize that some of your older students are perfectly capable of responsible use. Totally recognize that. And I also recognize that middle school is a very transformative period. You know that. That some of the kids, they're not nearly as responsible as the others. And I do worry very much. We, we all know bullying happens. We, you know, it's just, to me, this would just be another opportunity for some of these kids to, to be doing things that they shouldn't. And honestly, for the short amount of time they're on buses, I think they can wait. We have the new first student app that parents can be track, tracking the progress of the buses. And I hope that's being communicated widely to, to help people in that respect. And I would also think that if there was truly an emergency on a bus, let's say the bus runs off the road, nobody's hurt, but you know what? Kids, take your phones out, tell your, tell your parents. Fine. You know, that, those are one of those common sense exceptions to the rule. But in general, I really have a problem with allowing children in the area of nine to thirteen, the ability to have free rein with, with no supervision of what they're doing with those phones, while they're around their friends on the bus, and around children who may very well be significantly younger than them.
Could I ask that we perhaps continue it to our next agenda, hoping that people will, that the, the change will sort of get out there to our, our, our parents? I mean, I'm, I'm, I would love to hear rationale either way from our parents about why they would or wouldn't want the handbook change. And I, I don't know that, maybe it wasn't clear enough on the agenda, but I, I, maybe if we continue it and, you know, see if we can maybe get some additional feedback from, from our, you know?
I, I think to piggyback on what you're saying, instead of, like, right now, I'm looking at the handbook, the TMS handbook. So it's not under the cellphone section. It's in the bus safety code section, and all it says is no cellphone usage. What if the language was modified to say, in certain situations, may contact parents, something to that effect, where it's not a free rein of... What if the language was modified to say, in certain situations, may contact parents, something to that effect, where it's not a free rein of, like, get on Snapchat, start bullying this kid, take some videos?
Yeah, no, you're right.
That's my concern, I mean, we see adults that are less than kind on social media, so...
So how, how was the agenda written, I'm just...
The agenda was written, discuss potential TMS handbook revision, allowing cell phones on the bus.
Yeah, on the middle, I guess we could, could say middle school bus, but I mean, it says the bus, so...
Well, it says TMS.
Yeah, oh, it does, okay, I, oh, yeah, I'm looking at it, yeah.
I'm in favor.
I'm a little surprised we, we didn't get any feedback, I, well, but, I mean...
And I get it, I want to hear from my kid right away, she's at the high school, if, if I'm worried about something, I would want to reach out to her, but we also have, I think every parent of school-aged children has Find My Friends, or some sort of app where they know where their kid is, First Student has the app now as well, so I would be in favor of revisiting this, but maybe the language is a little bit more specific, rather than yes to cell phones, no to cell phones, maybe set some parameters, put some language that defines it better.
So then maybe approve the request, um, understanding that, uh, if, if the majority agrees, understanding that we want the cellphone use to, to be very specific and limited in the handbook.
And that sounds like a good idea, but who's going to police it?
Well, yeah, you're right.
How is it policed now, it can't just be the bus driver?
Well, yeah, it's not now, that's...
It's not.
It's not, and it hasn't been a problem, I'm not going to, you know, I, I, I understand how kids can be with cell phones, but it has not been a problem.
Unfortunately, what we're doing is drawing attention to it by having the discussion.
I know, that's, that's...
We have monitors on the middle school buses?
Yeah, there are monitors on all the buses, correct.
So they're part of that process.
Yeah, and like I say, it has not been a problem, I can never say never, but I, I understand where you guys come from, maybe we, maybe we limit the use.
And I just don't see saying... I don't see saying, fourth, fifth, sixth, you can't, but seventh and eighth, you go for it, they're all on the same bus, you either have to do it or not do it.
You can't, you can't. You can't police that, you can't.
And you're right, um, Elaine, it's like, to have, but to Jocelyn's point, maybe it's in an emergency situation, the bus is stopped, there was a, you know, a, you know, I don't know.
Again, that's the common sense provision that I was...
The common sense stuff, but...
I would also, like you said, I wouldn't mind hearing from parents on this.
I would also like to hear from, um, school staff...
Mm-hmm.
About this, because honestly, I was talking with a teacher last weekend, who was adamantly opposed to this.
Even though they're not on the bus?
Yep. Uh, this is a middle school teacher, not one of ours, by the way, different, different community, but who had ve, very valid points about it. Um, I know Mrs. Mendez, you, you look like you want to say something, did you want to come up to the microphone?
Please.
Come on up. Don't go too far, Mr. Zatoli.
Welcome.
Can I tell you who I am?
Yes.
Carolyn Mendez, one sixty-eight, Haiden Ave. My son and, uh, my, we have three grandchildren in school, and three granddaughters, and they, my son and his wife travel often, and we have the children. The girl, my granddaughter is in eighth grade, the oldest, and she will text us because we don't know when to pick her up, and we both, you know, we all work, so she will text us, and they are going to text, whether we, they have permission or not.
Texting doesn't worry me so much, it, it's more of the...
That's what they're doing, they're not using the phones.
Right, like, recording, Snapchat, TikTok.
Right.
And that's your, that is your eighth-grade granddaughter who is...
Yeah, because the others don't have telephones.
An independent, my worry is the not-so-responsible, independent child.
I understand, but, uh, they're going to do it, whether...
Doesn't mean we need to allow it.
Right, you're right, but, I mean, for her, and she did get in a lot of trouble with the bus driver, because she was, she was, um, it was the first day of school, and they got on the wrong bus, and the bus driver was not happy with her, and sent them away crying.
I mean, I do see the bus as different from the school day, I mean, the school day is very structured, the school day is very, you're learning, you're, you're, I mean, it's just a structured time, um, versus the school bus, where you're just sitting there on your way home.
Well, Mr. Zatoli and his staff took care of it, but there was, there was a lot that, that went on because of the, the cellphone and getting on the wrong bus, everybody's stressed out, but they are doing it, thank you, of course. It's true, I don't agree with the whole giving them free rein, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so what's everyone's pleasure, are we going to vote on this this evening, are we going to be looking for more information?
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Are we going to amend any motions?
Um, if I may, uh, this agenda item is not for vote, just for discussion, so I think we've had a healthy discussion.
Oh, it does say discuss. Thank you, okay.
So why did we take a motion?
Let's rescind those motions, I'll rescind my motion, I wasn't clear that it was just discussed.
And do I have the rescission of the second?
I think that was, was that Kim or Elaine? Who made the second?
Elaine made the motion, I think.
I made the motion.
Oh, did I rescind?
Did you second it?
Yes, I did, so you rescind, Elaine?
Thank you very much.
And I'll rescind, you got to rescind.
Rescind my motion?
And I will rescind my second, I didn't even, thank you, Mr. Haskins, I didn't even notice.
You're welcome, uh, our administrative staff will survey parents and teachers, get some opinions...
That would be great.
And, and come back to you with more information, we will be reviewing the middle school handbook at the next school committee meeting, so it would be appropriate to do that then.
I think, I think that's fair, it's, it's tough for us to make decisions in silos here, um, and, and I think having that, that input from others is going to be important. All right, that, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you, Mr. Zatoli.
Okay, we have announcements, we have our next meeting, as I've referred to several times, this evening on September twenty-third, and following that, we have October fifteenth. Time is flying.
The fifteenth of October, yes, okay, well, I'm right there, Elaine, open your eyes.
Okay, um, we will now make a motion to move into executive session. First off, under Rhode Island General Law forty-two forty-six five A two, negotiations update for Council ninety-four, Rhode Island General Law forty-two forty-six five A one, job performance, character, physical or mental health, superintendent evaluation involves, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Polish?
Yes.
Ms. Puckett? Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're in executive session, thank you.
Where are we going, to the bathroom? No.